I'd like to call to order the Town of Emerald Isle Planning Board meeting for February 26, 2024. I'd like to welcome Chris Seberger, brand new Planning Director. First meeting with us, welcome. With that said, we call the roll.
All right, Ethan Parker.
Here.
Ty Cannon.
Here.
Chad McAvery.
Here.
Ken Sullivan.
Here.
Susan Minett.
Here.
Andrea Beasley.
Here.
And Jim McCovey.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is Safely subdivision application. This is a request to subdivide a parcel. Chris, you're going to explain the circumstances?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Safely has a subdivision request. In normal cases, it's considered a minor, but our code requires all subdivisions to go before both floors before signing off on it. And this is a three-acre parcel off of Emerald Drive at fiscal address of 4308 Emerald Drive. And that parcel was previously subdivided out. And you'll see in your packet, in 2020, the owner actually combined it into one three-acre lot because he had intent on doing other developments on there. He since changed his mind. So he has petitioned the board or the town to consider allowing him to re-subdivide the property, taking one lot and creating or having two lots on there. It's following the same lot lines as what was in the recombinations plan. So it's just, it's really a simple subdivision. There are no streets involved on this. There are no major utilities other than he's got existing house on one of the lots and he plans on selling the other lot and will get a development on that one. So that's really it for that one. I'm open if there are any questions.
Yeah, I couldn't read it on the survey. But it appears that the driveway is on where the property line would be. Is he planted, is he here?
I do not see his surveyor here.
Would he be required to put that driveway on the same lot with the house?
Yeah, the driveway is on the same lot as the house. And then that separate lot will have the new curb access.
Okay, I didn't see the driveway on the survey. It was so small. In the aerial picture, it looks like it's right in the center of the three-acre lot. Right there. The only problem I would have with it, that he would be required to put the driveway, make sure it's not on the other lot.
Or it could require shared access. Either one, I know DOT would probably prefer shared.
They would prefer shared access.
But he would need to add that on the map. If they're intending to do that, they would need some type of access.
I don't know if this is important or not, but it seems like there's a typo in this. You actually referred to it twice as 7024.
Yeah, that is a typographical error, my apologies.
Yeah, that's just in on the agenda. Elsewhere, it's got the right address.
No, it's got it wrong here as well. The second page.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Because I was looking it up and I was like, wait a minute, this is confusing. Then I realized it was, it must have been a typo.
It is 4308, it's a fiscal address.
Somehow it's a number on the lot, I guess that GIS number or something. When they recombined it, it got it out of order of all the others, I think.
Yeah, it must be a GIS typo as well.
Yes, but it is 43.
So the new lot, if we approve it, will be 4306. Looks like.
Hypothetically, yes.
4308, oh yeah. Yeah, so the new lot would be, it would be 4306 and 4308?
Hypothetically, I mean, I don't know if the county still issues the addresses, but we can certainly work with them and ensure it's quiet.
I own a property that's 43 and a half. When they divided the lot, threw everything out, so I got the half. That's the legal mailing address of that lot. Any other questions?
No, I motion to approve.
Ty Cannon made a motion to approve subdivision.
Do we want to make that motion with the stipulation of the driveway?
driveway access? Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to add that?
A motion to approve with the stipulation that we find out what to do with the driveway, whether it's going to be a shared access or two separate driveways. Because when you look at the map, it looks like the driveway is right on the property line.
I'll second the motion.
Ethan Parker seconded the motion. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay.
And a note here, our newest member, Paul, Jim. We're not sure if he's officially appointed tonight yet because there's a mix-up at the Board of Commissioners meeting, not our mistake, not his mistake. So he's just going to refrain from voting tonight, but he's going to join in discussion. Good way to break him in.
Yes, absolutely. Easy.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
So the next item is recommended amendments to Section 6.2, the Unified Development Code. It's specifically handling flood damage prevention. We are currently in the process of a five-year community rating system verification and review. And these are recommended changes that our reviewer has made to ensure that we maintain our Class VII certification. The importance of that is for every class where we're lower than 10, there's a 5% savings on flood insurance premium. So it's very important that we maintain that 15% reduction for our citizens. They're all logical changes. They're changes to ensure that we follow the updated FEMA code on enforcement in the flood, in the delineated flood lanes. That's it on that one unless there are specific questions on the recommendations. Again, it's just to bring us in compliance with everything and ensuring that we can maintain that Class VII.
Okay, this has nothing to do with the stormwater issue later on in the agenda? This is the flood damage prevention ordinance. And this is required by the state, isn't it?
If we want, if we want to maintain a Class VII CRS rating, it is mandated. It's not required to operate, but for us to continue to be able to offer that discount on premiums, we have to do that.
Chris, in other sections of the ordinance, we're required to have a two-foot freeboard for stick-built homes, single-family homes and multifamily, correct?
That is correct.
In the manufactured home, it's showing one foot above?
Yes.
Do we want to be consistent and go to two foot above?
We certainly can if it is recommended by the board.
Sure. Is there a reason why they left it?
I do not know. You know, when, in reviewing the recommended changes, it went from just based off the chassis height to just that one foot. But it is a residential unit. Keep in mind, they're not allowed in BE zones unless they're in an existing MUP home park. But it would make logical sense to require any residential to adhere to the same code.
Right, yeah, that way we don't have a mix-up in ordinance.
Correct.
I would say I would like to see that one foot be changed to a two-foot freeboard to match the code with residential structures.
Makes sense to me.
Make it a little cleaner. Do you want to make a motion?
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to change Section, let's see, 6.2.4 to C and the first I from one foot above freeboard to, or sorry, one foot above the regulatory flood protection elevation to two foot.
I second that.
On every lot, I mean, throughout, on the.
Yeah, so for manufactured homes, in with stick-built modular homes, any other single-family or multifamily residential structure, we have a two-foot freeboard above. Here is just, I think the red line was one foot. I'm just saying for manufactured homes specifically, to bring that in compliance with the stick-built homes, it would be two foot.
Just be two foot across the board.
Yeah.
But it's one foot now.
For just my manufacturer.
Well, that was something that they had redlined to change in the ordinance.
Okay, what page is that on?
That would be page 15 of the total package.
They're not numbered.
Yeah, so if you.
It's a specific standards.
Yeah, it says one foot above.
Yeah.
You're saying to do it two foot, change that to two foot because everything else is two foot.
Correct.
I understand now.
Yep. Kind of have some consistency with residential structures.
Everything else on that, are you making a motion to recommend?
I second.
The ordinance with the condition that it's two foot, freeboard across the board?
Correct.
Okay.
Two foot plus, I guess, is what the actually is.
Yep.
Two foot plus, any mechanical ductwork or whatever.
Okay, you second it? Any other questions, comments? Anybody out there got a question or comment? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous again? Next item on the agenda. Okay, this is kicked back to us from a 2023 issue. I think it actually started in 2022, but with, when word got out, a lot of people had a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. This is a discussion of previously approved amendments to the Emerald Isle UDO, increasing the setback requirements for oceanfront parcels platted before June 11, 1977, from 10 feet to 15 feet. With that said, the Fire Chief is here to give a presentation. We'll let him start with his presentation. Welcome Chief, Fire Chief William Mathias. Can everybody see his screen fine?
Good evening, first time in my close eighteen years now. Been invited to the planning board on the English Street, so thank you for having me.
Thanks, Greg.
So I was asked to speak tonight on this aspect. Looking back, I've received emails over the years, shouldn't say over the years, over the last year. Emerald Isle doesn't have oceanfront fires. It doesn't happen, I've lived here 20 years, we don't have oceanfront. You don't have to worry about that. Well, contrary to popular belief in those emails, we do have these oceanfront fires. And so one of the things that is funny, when I go to NFA up in Maryland, when I go to any other conference in South Carolina, North Carolina, I'm sitting down with a class of fire professionals from across the world. The one thing that we always can throw in being here on Bog Banks or any other fire chiefs is wind-driven fires. There's no testing facility for it. We are unique in that aspect, we constantly have a breeze. With that being said, one of my tasks is overall safety for the citizens and visitors of Emerald Isle, and that includes housing. Have I been on a couple of these fires that have been on the beachfront? Absolutely. Just wanted to touch, in 20 years, we've had 170 structural fires on Emerald Isle. Forty-one of those in those 20 years have been oceanfront houses. And there's your losses there for the 20 years for fire losses dealing with these structural fires in total. Oftentimes what we'll see, and we'll see when we go through this, well, just to back up, some of the things I've listened to over the previous board meetings, citizens, frontal dune impact encroachment, parking concerns onsite on the street. Bog Banks had a presentation about water concerns. Also, a water concern for us, seeing, you know, 3,000 square foot home getting tore down, and then a 6,000 square foot home going back. There's a large concern on the safety aspect for us. And then obviously keeping Emerald Isle a family beach. So these are just two, pulled straight from Zillow. Some of the things that we face, that I face when I drive around our community, you see on the right-hand side there, you have some smaller, what we would call Old Town Emerald Isle, fishing down towards the east end. And you see what is being built up, not only blocking the views of Second Row, but it's concerning when you have double or triple the size of a structure going back. So this here is a data plot of all those structured fires on Emerald Isle. If any of y'all would like it, I can email it to you. I won't go off the PowerPoint right now because I know that's going to be a headache for Greg, don't worry about it. It's just a map of Emerald Isle and where those structured fires were plotted. Hopefully this will play. This is a ring doorbell. This happened two years ago. This is Land Zen, okay? It might play. There we go. So 1:42 in the afternoon, flames visible, see them right there. It is shortened down. The gist of this is it took 14 feet and a half minutes before the first fire truck got on site. That problem is because we have service, we have traffic, and our current Station One is that far away from making an adequate suppression. Here in this fire, we have spot fires, you'll see as the video plays through, fires in the yard spotted. You see the wind drive right now? We had fires spot on the other side of that yellow house to your right. These contractors here, we're doing everything they could with the water hose to keep their lumber against the fire due to the thermal radiation. And it's a factor that we have to take into account anytime we size up our commercial asset building to go around to our residential subdivision. And we actually tactically strategically try to plan for the worst-case day. So hearing this, I was actually on the beach strand. We were just starting to train for lifeguards and saw the popping of smoke, but you see there, 14, or 150, 152, sorry. Flame penetrates in, you see the soffit starting to go. But you see how much damage the fire can take when it starts. Anybody who'd love to see the full footage of what happened, so that's a concern for all responding. Coast Guard Road is a top priority for us right now, getting emergency response down to that area. This here, oop, this is another Emerald Isle fire. This one was, this was four years ago. This was on the oceanfront, similar to that one, where those were keyhole lots in Land Zen. This sits on the ocean, right across the street just about. And what we had here, we had a propane pool heater leak on the side of a structure, that residence that was involved in that fire there. And the exposure, which is the next structure next to it, all fired as well. Damage, siding, got up into the soffit, there was, I would say moderate damage to that exposure. This here, seeing stuff all across the state, 2019 Surf City, I want to say there were seven units that eventually went down in that particular fire. Surf City setbacks are seven and a half foot side setbacks. So what I learned through a previous administrator, take a look at what your other beach communities are doing. I went from Corolla down to Kitty Hawk, Nag's Head, Wrightsville Beach, AB, back down to Sunset Beach, seeing what their code was that they had in place. One of the things that stood out to me here in Kitty Hawk's model is due to the size of the dwelling, they increased the setback. The bigger the structure, the more setback was needed. So the last slide I got, just a recommendation from Fire Chief for safety, model similar to Kitty Hawk, total square footage, not just dwelling, that keeps the ground level from being enclosed at a later time. Height factor might increase side setback, fire resistant materials. Putting that into our ordinance, whether it be a fire-rated exterior insulation, non-combustible siding, pool heaters and other utilities, make it where they're not in between the structures, but either on the oceanfront or on the north side of the building, or vice versa, depending on how that structure is laid out. And then obviously, can't go without giving a push for home fire sprinklers. They do save lives. It isn't, it's a myth of the cinema, but if they get exposed, that one pops, not all of them pop. Are there any questions that I can answer for y'all tonight?
I have a question, keep in mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
170 fires in 10 years?
Twenty.
Twenty years. Forty of those oceanfront?
Forty-one.
And how many of those jumped structures?
So that is a different data metric that I would have to go back and pull to see what the exposure counts were on those 41. I don't have it off the top of my head. And I can easily go back to those reports, pull them out, and we have to document those exposures when they catch like that.
And I should have started off by saying, a lot of the stuff we use, which y'all do, and of course, your aerial side are as much safer as you can get. So that's the balance I think that we're talking about tonight.
Okay. Yeah.
Anybody else?
Actually, I kind of have a question that you reminded me, I wanted to ask that. Of those 41, do you know which ones had 10-foot setbacks and which ones had 15-foot setbacks?
I do not, but I can, I would have to correlate our data within the Fire Department with that of Chris's data at the Planning Department and see as far as, because I know that last one I said on the oceanfront, that one is a complete tear down, and I believe the lot is still vacant right now. So if somebody were to build back right then, then the previous structure, which was built on that 10-foot, which has now been torn down, would then have to go and be built with 15-foot setbacks, currently speaking.
Right. I just was curious because if they hadn't jumped and they were at 10 feet. But I do know where you're going with all of that too, just because it did, just if it didn't jump, doesn't mean it wouldn't have it at a different wind or something, but.
I would say the only thing that, I'm just flashing back in my career just here on Emerald Isle, I would say there was probably two structured fires that I was on responding to that I do not recall having some type of exposure damage jumping.
Okay.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So do you have the data or have you looked into the data for second row oceanfront houses or soundfront houses that have the 10-foot setbacks as well?
So with that, within that 170 number, that was all fires that included the second row, third row, sound side.
Specifically 41 oceanfront.
Forty-one oceanfront. And that being, that data metric that I pulled on or sat on really was looking over the other beachfront communities. Obviously, their zoning was slightly, they were different everywhere, but they had oceanfront. Here's your, you know, certain setbacks or certain ordinances for first row, second row, certain areas. So their zoning was slightly different in that aspect. So if it was oceanfront, because we're constantly getting a prevailing southwest wind, that is a huge threat as trees knock it down, as other houses, as those front row houses knock them down, that wind gets less and less as we come across. Now granted, on the flip side, if we get a strong northerly breeze, everything changes. So that's a devil's advocate, playing with the wind, mother nature.
Chad, I'm sorry to interrupt. Chad, to your point, you were talking about 25% of all the fires, the setbacks have been changed. And if there's not a lot of fires jumping structure to structure, I was kind of wondering why it's changed.
Is it possible for you to just show me that Kitty Hawk example one more time that you had there?
Greg?
I was going to say something, but you're going to answer questions after this or after each case?
Can you pull the Kitty Hawk slide back up?
I think we take your questions now.
Yeah, go ahead.
I talked to the head building inspector for Carteret County, Chris Jones. He's been an inspector here for around 20, 30 years. And he said that there was condominium fire down Atlantic Beach, I think it was four or five years ago, with three condominiums burned. He said they were at, I think, a 10 or 15-foot setback. He said, if you have a 21-hour wind, I don't care. He said, he doesn't care how far you put the houses apart, 50-foot, they're still going to burn the next house. And the thing that we're worried about here is all these lots were platted on this beach, 70% of them, I think before, what was it, Paxton, 73?
77.
77. Everything platted before 77 has a 10-foot setback. So all those houses, if they were to burn halfway down, they're non-conforming. So they basically got to be tore all the way down if they're more than 50%. And that's taking a lot of rights away from the people who own the property. And then 70% of the properties on Emerald Isle are 10-foot setbacks. So you starting now on the oceanfront, are you going to go to second row right on through to the soundfront? You're taking a lot of land away from people. I don't want to say anything about fires, I don't want anybody, okay, to get hurt in fire. But you got to think about people's property rights. And I think you need to get the data. If you look at the North Carolina fire codes, three-foot is a setback for when you have to start having a lot of these different plywood windows, spacing and stuff like that. Ours was set at 10-foot. Five-foot.
I think that's what they just did down here at Allen. You talking about Village West?
Village West.
Fully sprinkled building.
Yep. Village West was recommended by the Town of Emerald Isle to build it, and they are sprinkler. That's good. But it's five-foot. So, you know, you guys, you're changing the rules, and I just don't think it's fair for the oceanfront people and all the other people. 70% of them changed the rules after it's been in that for so long. So I would say we need to change it back.
It's a great point. He brings up North Carolina Fire Code. Being a North Carolina Fire Inspector Level 3, I was a part of Village West. Yes, there is a five-foot setback with that commercial structure. That commercial structure is fully fire-protected, FDCs, sprinklers, FDC Fire Department connections that we can go in, take over, override the system, make sure we provide enough water to extinguish that fire until we can get some crews up there or even help in life safety. Again, when we start dealing in Fire Code, there's very little that it comes back into residential side streets, roadways, access to these buildings, kind of play in the residential side. Commercial aspect of it, there's a whole nother gambit of it that the Fire Code comes into. In the commercial aspect and how North Carolina and the international Fire Code has worked is, yes, you can have less restrictive setbacks. So say, yeah, we want to go back to 10-foot, but we want to do home fire sprinklers, throwing it out there. Or we want to do some type of fire-resistant, non-combustible siding, insulation, there's some type of preventative measure that allows that to be dropped back to that 10. That's how the commercial aspect of Fire Code works. So be more than happy to answer any other questions.
Why can't you do that in residential then?
So, back to, good point, good question. North Carolina sees persons' home as their castle. And so when it comes to that, unless it's a common area, so basically anywhere in the open where the public can gather, cook, store, walkways, breezeways, that's all commercial aspect. But once it enters into that property, that front door, the North Carolina Fire Code no longer applies.
Question, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Again, appreciate what you and the Fire Department do and appreciate the planning board. You guys have a tough job ahead of you and respect every one of you for the work you do. And thank you very much for volunteering to be on the planning board. Chief, thank you so much for your work with the Fire Department. Do you know how long ago Kitty Hawk adopted that conventional setback?
I can look. I did provide the data to Chris, I believe Thursday of last week. I sent him the documents, or the ordinance, should I say, from Kitty Hawk. So I think on that official piece of paper would give us that when it was last done. If I recall correctly, in Nag's Head and Kill Devil Hills. If I recall correctly, in Naggshead and Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, it's probably in a four-year timeframe, twenty-twenty is ringing in my head. So, but don't quote me on that.
Does it pertain to new subdivisions or is it a town-wide thing or is it just for a particular district?
In the way that I read that particular Kitty Hawk, they had these zones listed as high density beachfront, correct, Chris? Medium or moderate density and low density. And all three of those beachfront, is how they term those zones, had that same chart.
And do we know how many structures were deemed nonconforming by, by changing the ordinance?
In Kitty Hawk?
No, in Emmeral, when we changed the ordinance.
To my knowledge, as far as the way I understand, the way the UDO change was anything that is currently standing is essentially grandfathered until some type of natural disaster, fire, or something else, somebody comes in there, just decides to buy up two lots and put something bigger, that nobody was nonconforming unless a natural disaster or something that had to recreate or rebuild occurred.
But if you were going to say, does your house meet all the current zoning ordinances? They'd have to answer no. Correct. And if that's the case, were they notified? What was your input on, on that decision here?
I was not in the original UDO discussion.
Did anyone get any input from the property owner who were affected?
No.
Now, I talked about that.
Wasn't a single one.
Tell me that two statutes were followed, put in the add to paper. But I was just wondering if we could love that, even in notifying, hey, heads up, you might want to comment, we're going to change the ordinance on your property.
If I may, and this was provided to me as part of this, there were a total of one thousand one hundred and three properties affected by this change. The pre-seventy-seven lots were one hundred and sixteen. Empty lots, total empty lots in that oceanfront at the time of this was fifty-three. That's my understanding, what was presented back when, when they did the presentation for the Phase One UDO update, it did include this change. And...
Could you say that one more time? How many lots were affected?
Sure. So it says total amount of properties in oceanfront properties, one thousand one hundred and three empty lots for fifty-three. Amount of built homes, one thousand and fifty. Then they've got the pre-seventy-seven total at one sixteen.
I think you got that backwards. I think it's one sixteen towards the, is it post-seventy-seven?
No, the, post-seventy-seven is eight ninety-nine. And then, I guess, in the year of nineteen seventy-seven, there's...
Before nineteen, before nineteen seventy-seven?
Yeah.
There was a hundred and sixteen.
The majority of the oceanfront, it's ten-foot setbacks. There's three or four subdivisions that have fifteen-foot setbacks or post-seventy-seven?
It's just what was given to me and what was presented.
I mean, that's what it is.
The estimate that I have here on the spreadsheet, total homes potentially affected because it has what year, but not what month on the date, so they have to do a whole lot more digging to find out exactly. It's estimated one hundred and thirty-three point five total homes potentially affected. Total properties not affected is approximately nine sixty-nine point five.
That's, that's not correct. Did you say a hundred and thirty-three homes affected on that?
Estimated.
That's not correct. Are you going to answer questions?
It's spreadsheet, who did this spreadsheet?
Yeah, I mean, it's, to my knowledge, it was everything filed for the agenda item on January tenth, twenty twenty-three to consider Phase One of the UDO adoption.
I believe if I'm taking right, there's only like four oceanfront subdivisions that are fifteen-foot setbacks. There's one at the east, next to Shell Cove subdivision, that's fifteen-foot setbacks. And one next to Sea, Sea Oaks, is fifteen-foot setbacks. Sea Oaks is fifteen-foot setbacks. And I believe some of lands in might be fifteen-foot setbacks. I don't know if they're all ten-foot setbacks.
This is only affecting oceanfront lots.
Yes, only oceanfront lots, yeah. The rest of Emmeral, all those other subdivisions, they're ten-foot setbacks.
Yeah. Where I live is template. I'm on the sound side, but it's all nothing.
I think that it's not my first. And that's a thing, too, on sound side, and now that it's sound side, I mean, we get fifteen, twenty mile an hour winds on a regular basis. And I was just thinking, if we're going to apply, you know, to put land for public safety, it should be uniform. Because most of all, we had to ask these people if they want that protection afforded among them, you know, that we're going to, we're going to say, we know especially if we're going to put that safety on you, whether you want it or not, we have to at least ask them if they want that extra protection. If they're all afforded, regardless of these people are afforded, I'm all about keeping that. But if they weren't notified, if they weren't invited to it, if they weren't aware of it, then I don't, I don't have a heart of doubt.
That would be a question for the Board of Commissioners, who was notified. At the planning board, we don't send out notices for a public hearing like the Board of Commissioners do, because we recommend, we don't make the rules. We make recommendations. So we don't generally get the level of input that they get. When they start mailing everybody that their property is being reworked somehow, it gets a lot of attention. It's just not worth the town to do it for a planning board level meeting.
I think it would be worthwhile, though, maybe that we ask, maybe we put that out to, that the planning board would like to know what the residents...
Well, since you asked.
Thank you. I'm Paxton Holtz. I was not notified by the Town Board. I'm one of those vacant oceanfront lot owners. And I spoke to the Commissioners when I first learned about this change in the setback. And I came to a meeting and protested earnestly to the Commissioners and said, what we do not want is for me to start a domino effect. If the value of my vacant lot changes by virtue of you shrinking my building envelope, I will take my protest all the way to Raleigh, to the Board of Equalization and Review, and I will request a lower property value for my oceanfront lot based on the reduction of my building envelope, and it will be granted. And if that starts a domino effect of folks that you're making into nonconforming uses, not you, but the Commissioners are making nonconforming uses, when the more recent houses I submit would be more likely to withstand fires because of increased safety regulations, better wiring, I'd like to know how many of those oceanfront houses were old places with rubbed wiring, with wiring that perhaps in the attic had been shaken for years by wind and hurricanes and so forth. I had a brand-new house that was so shaken by the artillery at five years of age, I had a fire in my brand-new house. Could not imagine but a nail by a subcontractor rubbed a wire and the shaking of the house sparked a fire. And it was between my floor and my ceiling, my floor joists, and I could have lost it. But that's an extraordinarily rare situation. But I think age of houses, the new safety regulations, the new observation of, of Fire Codes that are inherent in all builders now, and they all abide by them. But if my property rights are diminished by actions of the Town Board, I will take it as far as I have to take it to get a serious reduction in value. And if it starts a domino effect, what's that going to do to your tax base? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. So obviously, people want to build a size house, they're going to build that size house. So they're going to build it up higher.
Yep.
So all of a sudden, we're going to have these really tall buildings everywhere.
We have forty-one foot.
But they're going to go as high as they can. Like, right now, people don't go as high as they can. Like, that's what, and then you cross the street, well, at least on the low, the low rent side, on the east side. People like, you can see the water, like, we try to share. But all of a sudden, if you start squishing it, they're going to go higher. Does that not also cause an issue, like, just as much going this way, going that way? Or off the ocean?
So, yeah, so anytime we do have a height restriction on that, and a lot of the, what I would see being built, no, I'm not going out and taking a tape measure and knocking on people's doors and dropping a line, is people are utilizing just about the maximum height that we allow them here on Emmeral. We plan for, as far as our apparatus, we got the hundred-foot platform. One of those reasons was power lines, oceanfront structures that we couldn't, with the seventy-five foot, get up or through or around a, with that structure or with that apparatus. So we had to go and get twenty-five more feet. So we could, in the event of life safety, make a rescue or provide water up to that, that floor if we couldn't make access from interior. Just different things in, again, I just take into account safety for all, just pointing out some different things. Worked here for seventeen years. I'll continue to respond to them. I'll continue to put them out the best that we can. So, but no, to answer your question, I see it being maximized already as far as going up. And a lot of the fires that I've seen, not just here, Shutter's fire was a big, that may be the one Chris Trent was speaking of, next to the Doubletree. And that was, yeah, eight years, ten years ago, probably. That was due to LP piping. Piping rested through, had a pinhole, found a spark, boom. We had a flamethrower coming up through those two units that caught the third unit on fire. You had a lot of thermal radiation heat occurring. It's, yes, fire's going to burn, fire's going to burn hot. Fire's going to catch other things on fire. We've all been around a bonfire. I was just asked to come here to present, see what other people are doing. I always like to take the stance of, what are our other beach communities here along North Carolina doing? That one stuck out to me as far as Kitty Hawk was concerned. Kind of like their size, it seemed to me to answer a lot of the other potential concerns and issues that we are having to experience here in Emmeral, being that you put a size to a square footage, and then your setbacks either decrease or increase due to your size of your structure.
Chief, I have a question for you. Would it be something that you could get behind trying to pull some of the commercial code into the residential requirements? It would be a little touch and go on our planning staff. And I know we don't review building code, but maybe we could have something on the site plan that would allow for reduced setback to have an X core or something the like that instead of using typical sheathing, we would switch to use a two-hour fire rated barrier. Would that be something that maybe you could support? That could kind of, you know, get, get behind some of the vertical new construction that, you know, we want to increase the size to, to basically give you ten more feet to build that helps the property values, that helps, you know, the tax base, but also would help on your end to try to prevent the spreading of the fire would give you that fifteen, twenty minutes to get there, even though it's a two-hour firewall, it would give you that extra fifteen, twenty minutes before it starts spreading. Would that be something that you might, would be okay, you know, backing?
Yeah, so as far as, you know, the way the Fire Code is set up, and I know with your background, you have, you can always supersede the Fire Code, and that goes into residential as well, but it has to be pulled by UDO ordinances into, you know, Town of Emmeral if we wanted to do something out of the Fire Code. We just can never subcede it. So we can never do less in a commercial setting. But on a residential aspect, when you go and split up a twenty thousand square foot property and you want to put mixed occupancy in it, firewall comes into play. So you have to put a two-hour firewall in those places to make it a assembly occupancy and a business occupancy, sort of speak. By all means, that would assist greatly. That was kind of where I was going with the fire resistant insulation, the hardy board or hardy plank, things that, that will resist to an extent. And obviously, if somebody goes up and decides to commit arson, throw gas and throw an accelerant on it, can't really help that, but it would slow down fire.
And it'd be also something that I picked up on you saying, you know, any combustible features such as pool heaters or gas packs or any of that, you know, maybe we could require at site plan level that they be located, you know, in the furthest setback possible, meaning the front and rear setbacks being in that twenty-five foot, so that if you are in a key lot, then you'll still have that twenty-five plus twenty-five, you'll have fifty foot between the two structures versus having ten foot or twenty foot, I should say, if we do reduce back to ten foot, you know, you'd have that twenty foot versus fifty for, you know, your, all your combustible features on the front back of the house for pool heaters and whatnot.
Yeah. And that's a lot. I mean, the utilities, we live in a salt, very, you know, humid environment. It takes a toll. I don't care if it's painted of stainless steel, it's painted as, you know, from outer space, salt is going to destroy it. I've come to terms with that, I understand that. And so we see a lot of the LP piping, electrical wiring that Ms. Paxton was speaking of, all that exterior stuff, give it a year or two even out there in those elements, and it starts becoming a fire hazard. So by moving those utilities to where it would be the furthest setback, depending on how the plot or how the house structural wise is set up, it would be beneficial, just in my experience in fires that I've ever heard here in Emmeral.
Are homes allowed to have exterior applied tankless heaters?
As far as residential code, I cannot, again, I'm Inspector Fire Three for commercial.
The tank heater is the same as a pool heater. They're both propane powered or natural gas powered.
Correct.
So what would moving a pool heater away from the house do if you're going to still have a tankless heater, a two-hundred pound M E T tank heater attached to the side of the house?
So, so I believe what Ethan and I were talking, so what I've seen on that one slide where you had the aerial going up that was down right over here on the oceanfront, we had that pool heater in between, in between two structures. And so we had ten foot and ten foot, so we had twenty feet there. And even with that LP shooting up because of where that was placed on the side, what we're, what I was recommending in that last slide was, instead of it being on the east or west side of the structure, on an oceanfront house, it moved to either the north or south side of that structure.
But my point is, tank heaters are allowed to be installed to the side of the house in a complete structure.
Right.
So I would jump in there. That would be under the everything, all apparatuses, anything that has gas going to it, anything that's combustible, anything. It needs to be on the north and the south, no matter if it's a water heater, in, any apparatus that has any type of gas going to it to try to alleviate the, the issues of, you know, if this side blows and, you know, you're that close.
You've got to think about these things, you know, as far as you change a bunch of boards, okay? You're going to put a heater on the front side, on the, on the roadside, where the Fire Department's going to come in, okay? You can't do that. I mean, you're going to have the fire right there where the fire people come in to go try to fight the fire.
That's what we do.
Isn't that what you want?
We fight fire.
It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I mean, you don't come to get to where you can fight the fire if you got the gas and everything right in your face. I mean, it'd be a big thing.
I understand, understand, and by all means, I was not a part of the original. I know I was asked.
Yeah. And just think about that. I mean, you're putting, you're taking on the sides, you're putting them on the roadside. That's what Chris said, the, the county inspector, he said, Billy, if the wind's blowing twenty, thirty miles an hour, the Fire Department's can't get between these structures to fight. And that's what the problem is. I mean, if you go from ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, you're not going to be able to fight the fire. And if you put the gas right in the front of the house, right where you guys are going to try to fight the fire, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I mean, it's...
Well, to answer that scenario, and we can spend all night answering scenarios of that manner, but if I see a gas and I know it's gas on the front side of the structure, and I can see that that's in the appliance that is actually leaking, you know, it's going to look like a flamethrower, thrower, it's more than likely already going to be reaching the top of that structure because it's gas driven. First thing, coming off the truck, I'm going to say, hey, go ahead and secure that gas. As soon as we secure that gas, now we're not dealing with a gas fire, we're dealing with a Class A combustible fire. We're applying a thousand gallons of water that is on our trucks, and we've got hydrants about every five hundred feet here in Emmeral. So by all means, I'm not rushing, I'm trying to provide information, trying to work to a situation where it's good for everybody. And so I was just asked to come and speak. I've done my research, but we, we do fight fire. I love it. I wouldn't trade it for the world, so. fire, and I, I love it, I wouldn't trade it for the world, so.
You know what Ethan was saying, he said, "commercial," but if we required homes, if they had a ten-foot setback, new homes or tear-off and rebuilds, to be sided, the outside with non-combustible materials, would that be more helpful than being further apart?
I mean, not having any data or researched it, it would be a step in help, yes, as far as your thermal, every fire is different. I can't say, I, I'm sitting here right now, can't say that fifteen foot or thirty feet in between structures is going to save your house, or if your neighbor's house. I'm not saying that, I'm not going to stand up here and say that, putting these fire-resistant materials in there can do the same thing either. I just have to look at safety as a whole, and anything that we can do to slow that fire, and to allow crews to get on scene and manage that fire at an incipient stage, is going to be a benefit.
I wouldn't be in favor of you requiring anything more than you already do, and it goes back, and again, I don't think any of these comments are directed at you, we all respect and appreciate what you're doing, but why did it change to begin with? We've had forty-one oceanfront fires, twenty-five percent of all of our fires in twenty years, and it sounds like we don't know that the majority of them happen in jump structures. So why are you tackling this, and it's not even a problem? Sure, it would be great to have a hundred feet between buildings, but, you know, all these oceanfront lots are seventy-five feet wide, and so now you're reducing that, you know, another ten feet? And I, I kind of agree with Billy, I think a lot of those numbers are not exactly right. I think most of the structures are not before. So, so why are you changing, why did you change it?
On this, on this, Chief, where I'm getting these numbers, the total number of oceanfront lots is eleven hundred and three in Emerald Isle, according to this spreadsheet, and I think that's, sounds pretty accurate to me. And...
Well, I don't, to answer part of your question, I don't remember personally changing it. I do remember something, we had a discussion since then several times, and it was a fire chief come to the board, my understanding, and the fire piece chief requested it to be changed. But that was years ago, and I, like I said, I don't remember being a part of the UDO at that time, I've only been on the board three, three years now, four years, but I don't, I don't personally remember changing it, and I would have argued it then, because, because if, I like consistency. If the sound is ten foot, the ocean should be ten foot, I mean, what's-
And look, if I was fire chief, I would buy after twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want nobody to die.
Yeah. Well, I mean, ideally, fire chief, you want a fire hydrant for every house, ideally, but ours.
Every other, every other house.
We've got to be realistic.
What happened is incredibly effective, because anybody in here wants anybody's property rights. But my point is, forty-one oceanfront fires in twenty years caused you, I'm asking, to recommend a change?
I don't think that data was provided at the time that this was even discussed, and to be, and to be honest with you, I'm, I'm just going to let y'all know that, I believe I was at the meeting, you were at the meeting. I don't even remember it getting slid through personally, it was on paperwork, then next thing you know, there was a big discussion about it out and about in town, you need to go to this meeting because they're changing the setbacks. Well, apparently, we were part of that.
Yeah.
But I think it was the way it was presented to us, that we weren't, we weren't aware of what was going on, you know what I mean? Like, we weren't aware that there was a safety issue or discussion, it was slid in there, I'm not talking about the previous person that was in charge or whatever, I mean, but you saw, it's all documented, though, that we did read it, and we did understand it, we did agree on it, however, at this point in time, we're like, where were we at?
Yeah, that's how I feel.
Were we asleep at the table when that was presented? Because there was no presentation, and you did a great one, thank you, by the way.
I'll tell you why you didn't see it, because what they said was they were going to change some texts in the-
Yeah.
In the UDO.
And that's-
They were going to change some texts.
Some red lines with some-
They were changing it.
Right.
Okay? They slipped it through on you, okay? They didn't notify any of the public.
There wasn't public hearing or public comment?
They didn't have newsletters saying that we're doing this to anybody, because I know a lot of oceanfront people, they had no idea that that's happening, and most of them still to this date do not know that it's happening.
Right.
Because there's a little UDO board that-
Delap, where they purchased the house.
And changed it, and they didn't have the minutes to that UDO board meeting, because if they do, we need to see them.
Right.
They didn't do it, they just slipped it right through. Same thing with this other stormwater.
Saying, I was on the UDO, I'm on the UDO board, and I was on the committee, I mean, on the board, I'm on this board, and I was on the committee, and I don't recall, like I said, that, that presentation, unless I wasn't privileged for it, at the time, because I'm just, you know, just a volunteer.
We've got a tremendous amount of new material since it, this first started.
So, that being said, I mean, we as a planning board probably need to look at this and say, let's put it back the way it should be revisited again or something.
I think we're going to need time to dissect all this new data, not make a decision tonight. Go ahead, Jim.
Chris, just because I haven't had a chance to do my presentation, you do have the history of it in your packet, but the Board of Commissioners at their last meeting did unanimously recommend it, ask that you guys take a look at both this one and the next one we're going to talk about, so just making sure, clearly present that. You've heard concerns expressed in the audience, you've heard from our fire chief, as far as just what he's looking at. I think the chairman's right, there is a lot of information on this, as far as you and the audience, I, I don't know if notifications were sent out, I was not here, we're just trying to work through what the Board of Commissioners has instructed, so.
It, it's my recommendation that, that we give this at least thirty days to digest all this new data, before we come up with a recommendation. Everybody else feel about the same way?
I feel like, personally, that we should look at putting it back the way it was, and then doing the research or listening to all the data, and then coming up with a better safety plan, and presenting it to the oceanfront homeowners, that it's their right, I mean, it's their property, I mean, I feel like this needs to get back right the way it was, and then we can sit in our next meeting and discuss, put it on our agenda for the next meeting, discuss new options move forward, and then those can be presented to the homeowners that own that land.
I, I agree with you on that, mainly because it sounds like people weren't notified.
They weren't. I don't even know if we were notified, to be honest with you, I feel like it was duped. But then I asked you to pull it up at our last, I asked Ethan to pull it up at our last, our last meeting, and then remember, you pulled it up, you showed it here, we talked about it, and it was in the, in November, or whatever, in the mid-
That led to him.
I don't remember.
No, no.
This is what you want from me.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, like, in general, I think it was mainly pitched-
That's why we were-
-as a safety concern.
It was pitched as a-
But there was no data behind it, and there was nobody in the audience to even- And it was told to us that, that there was a public comment, or there was a public hearing before that, and I think it was just trying to get rushed in on that January tenth meeting, and you guys weren't notified at all, but we didn't know that, because we-
Would you like to make a motion to, to-
I'll say. I just want to say, I just want to say, just like we've come to a conclusion, how much this matters? So, right now, we're dealing with something that we didn't put on the other lots that are right across the street. There's been comments made that it's blocking, these big houses are blocking people's view.
By oceanfront, through a view.
I would say that's a true fact, but that's not, that's not why you, why you would change it, or it's like, but it sounds like that's what this is all about, is they didn't put the forethought in to look at it all the facts, because it sounds like it's just as bad as someone saying, hey, this big house is going to block my view. I mean, could you imagine paying for a lot your whole entire life, an oceanfront lot? I'm going to break out, I mean, I did, I said this before, you're a school teacher, you worked your whole life, but back, back in the day, you could buy a lot here in Emerald Isle, oceanfront lot, for what seemed to be not a whole lot of money, because it was a lot back then compared to now, but not really true. There's a lot of people that own lots in Emerald Isle that don't have a whole lot of money, and they had the dream to come down here and build a beautiful house in oceanfront. And just the fact that you tell them you can't do that, I mean, I believe, I truly believe, like Billy said, we, none of us in this room want anybody's house burnt down. I mean, I, I've seen a house, saw a house, I saw an oceanfront house that burned, and it burned the vinyl siding off of the house next door. I mean, maybe there's some solutions, but this was done hastily, I mean, it, it, this, this should be changed back, and then the facts should come out, and then you should go with the news. I mean, it, it's a, this is a big, big grab of people's property rights, and if this goes on the newspaper, then all those people, all those ten-foot setbacks that are across the street all the way to the south front, they're probably worried to death that you're going to do it to them. So I just, I just want to put that in there, I mean, I think it's just common sense.
We don't actually do anything, we just plan.
I'm, I'm just, I came to the meeting before to discuss this, and you guys all agreed that it didn't really get talked about, okay? This is the psychic hour. None of this is at you, it's just, it's just the whole thing of, of changing somebody's whole life, their whole property, it's not on your fingers.
I agree with Chad here, that what, what we do is, we go back to the ten-foot, but look at ways to improve fire safety in the coming months.
Right.
I agree with that.
I'll make a motion to revert the site setbacks from fifteen to ten-foot to the Commissioners, that, with, with the understanding that we're going to review possible-
Higher safety-
Higher safety features with the chief and the fire department.
Along with public comment?
Along with public comment.
Well, we can't-
I second the motion.
The public comments, um- We can recommend-
Yeah.
Well, we want public comment. Yes. The Board of Commissioners has to have them supposedly, but notifications are supposed, they're by law, I don't know where that got dismissed, but, okay, we have a motion and a second. That was, Ethan in the tie?
Yes.
Okay. And a request for public notice. For us, public notice for us. Oh, yeah. So, that, that, we would recommend that the site setbacks go back to ten-foot, the way they were, but we're going to continue to look at ways to improve fire safety, not just oceanfront, but everywhere, but specifically the oceanfront, because that's the hardest area to deal with. Do you understand the motion? All those in paper, say aye?
Aye.
A unanimous, a chief.
When was your, your little spiel here, when did you create that, your presentation?
Somebody tell me what that is, because my phone's over there.
Amber Alert, Amber Alert, Amber Alert.
We all got it.
The fire chief was alarmed, he was ready to go.
I hope. Let me tell me what that is, I could run. This, I believe, when I saved it today to my flash drive, February seventh.
February seventh of this year?
Yeah, so, just for knowledge, I have this interim after Chief Walker retired in June, June first, so, June first of twenty twenty-three, so, this, this data, I have no problem, working together, providing it, if y'all have questions, let Chris know, Chris can fire it back to me, and then I can collect it all, I got no problem collecting the metrics.
And then, Roy, did you, have you guys ever seen that presentation yet, to date? Have you seen his presentation yet? Okay. None of the Commissioners have seen it yet? Okay.
Do you have that in print?
Uh? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see a hide.
Listen for him.
All right, very good, yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Do you have that in print, paper format, so that we can study it and read it?
I can turn it to Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Can you forward that to all of us?
Absolutely. Or print it out for me?
Yes, sir.
I'm technologically challenged, I've still got a flip phone, remember. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. All right, that went easy.
I would, I would kind of like, if it's possible, to get, you know, to verify if that information was correct on that.
Okay, certainly.
Seems like there's, there's some big questions on that, and I don't know if there's any way to find out with those fires that he was talking about, which ones were ten-foot and which ones were fifteen-foot fire?
If, if he provides, I mean, everything has a record to it, as far as incident management side, and we can easily use that information to see if that lot or adjacent lot was a pre-seventy-seven or, because essentially, that's your measuring tool, those lots that were created in nineteen-seventy-seven or earlier, so yes, that is, that is something that we can put together.
Did you also get the, your construction?
I was thinking, I was just thinking that, too, if it was an older home, pre-seventy-seven.
How old the house was when it burned? That's going to go into play.
Yeah, that'll be in the tax records, so it'll add the age of the structure, so, yeah, that's certainly, it is something we can provide.
So that we, we find out, the more data we get, the more we can come up with solutions other than quote-unquote taking people's land. Okay, now, now another easy one, I think that's what folks are here for, that's funny words in it, UDO amendment discussion, section six point three, stormwater management, discussion of the effectiveness and efficiency of section six point three of the Emerald Isle Unified Development Ordinance pertaining to stormwater management.
Yes, sir.
Have fun.
Okay, again, just the same as the one you guys previously reviewed, it was recommended by the Board of Commissioners, by unanimous decision, for you guys to readdress this code and what, how it's written. You do have in front of you a copy of the code as it is currently drafted in our Code of Ordinances. You also have before you, I guess, back in August of twenty-three, there was a text amendment, application twenty-three zero one, and I believe the results of that is to only require the stormwater plan for those in flood zones, A E, V E zones. I believe that was recommended to the Board of Commissioners, and I guess the Board of Commissioners did not recommend or approve changing the code for that. You know, some of the questions in my month and a half here that I've just fielded is, you know, just questions on redevelopment, not necessary for, you know, stormwater, code should accept activity that is following a state stormwater permit, we had one where it was in a neighborhood that had a state stormwater permit, there was restrictive pervious coverage on each lot, and then code should require stormwater plans, when ground disturbance takes place, no proposed pervious coverage, so if there's ground disturbance, but there's no pervious coverage on there, I think our, our minimum is five hundred square feet on up to post ten thousand square feet. So those are just, I'm just repeating some of the concerns I've heard, giving you some of the history that I could find in this period of time to, to just give you some items to discuss. I would imagine there's folks in the audience that wish to discuss the matter also, so I'll open myself for any questions, if there are any.
First, I'd like to turn to these people. Yep. Do you have a slideshow you can show us?
Hello? I'm Billy Farrington, I live at eighty-one oh eight Sound Drive, and I'm a builder, and I developed Sunset Landing Subdivision, you were just talking about a minute ago, with the, there's a stormwater plan in there, it's low-density stormwater, which is less than twenty-five percent impervious, that's with the roads, all the houses, they have deed restrictions on all the houses, so that they keep it under twenty-five percent impervious. And that subdivision, let me say the first thing, Emerald Isle is making this stormwater plan stuff too, too, too damn hard to do, okay? This is very simple stuff, okay? There's two inches of water is what the town of- There's two inches of water is what the town of Emerald Isle wants you to keep on your own lot, two inches. So if you don't have any gutters, okay? The first two inches of water that comes off your house in the rain that you can drink, okay? Will go right in your yard. It's called sheet flow, all right? Your driveway, if you tilt your driveway and you slope your driveway, the water will run off of your driveway the first two inches. It's called sheet flow, okay? Goes right into your yard, gone, gone in a couple hours, most of the time. I mean, how many people in this town pay for water to water your yard, you know? That's, it's very simple. That's all we're doing, okay? That whole subdivision that we built down there at Sunset Landing, zero gutters, no gutters in that subdivision. All the ditches are slope ditches, drive-through ditches, okay? Yet, all of them have berms in between the yards to keep your own water on your own lot. It's very simple. All they're asking you to do is two inches. So if you have a two-inch berm between you and your neighbor, you've collected the two inches. Why in the hell do we have to have a stormwater plan from an engineer? I mean, it makes no sense. The Coast Guard Road, they're not having trouble down the Coast Guard Road with people putting stormwater on other people's lots. They're having trouble with the groundwater coming out of the ground. That's in between a thirty-foot dune on the oceanfront and a thirty-foot dune on the sound. In the middle, you have the groundwater is coming out of the ground and it's creating stormwater when we have a storm, when we have a hurricane. You can't fix that. The only way you can fix that is to pump it, punch it, pump it to the beach hills. Pump it to the beach, okay? That's what the, the town manager right now is getting permits to pump the water from the Coast Guard Road to the beach hills, okay? They're going to put it into beach hills. It's going to come back into the water table again, but it's going to be a week or two down the road before, so it will give everybody some relief. Okay, so there's no stormwater problem there. There is a stormwater problem on Red Drive. They need to do the same thing there. Take the water off of Red Drive, pump it, pump it up to the beach. Get rid of all the, all the stormwater problems that Emerald Isle has. The rest of Emerald Isle, they don't, we don't have a stormwater problem here. If everybody would just sheet flow their water on their, and keep the water on their own lot, there would be no stormwater problems. The town owns fifty miles of roads in Emerald Isle, okay? Fifty miles, okay? They own four or five buildings. This building right here we're in, the building next door, the firehouse next door. They have no, nothing, zero things on these buildings are these parking lots for stormwater. They have zero things on all the fifty miles of roads that are in this town for stormwater. You know what they have? Sheet flow. Now, the town can sheet flow everything that they own. Why can't these property owners sheet flow it right off of their houses into their own yards? Why do we have to go and hire an engineer to tell us where to put two inches of water? Two inches of water is a lot. I'll tell you how much two inches of water is. Two inches of water is basically one point six gallons of water, okay? And the rules for Emerald Isle, if you have a house, these houses I've been building are about a thousand square feet. They have about a thousand square foot of driveway. So it's basically about two thousand nine hundred and forty-four square feet. You times that by one point six gallons, that's four thousand seven hundred and ten gallons of water. They want us to put underground, okay? They want us to spend twenty thousand dollars a lot to put underground. We don't want to put it underground. Put it right on top of the ground. The study, the stormwater study that the town did in two thousand thirteen, it says best management practices. The conclusion of the stormwater study from five dollars out of Greenville, they say, put the water on top of the ground. Don't put the stormwater in the ground. So, you know, what are we doing? These, let me just give you an idea. The, the twenty, there's, I gotta slow myself down here. Does anybody in here know what the rainfall is for Emerald Isle a year?
Seventy inches, sixty-nine to seventy inches?
The twenty-year rainfall range for North, for Emerald Isle is thirty-nine point nine inches a year. Thirty-nine point nine inches. So I took this house.
Or that's per hurricane.
What's that?
Or per hurricane.
Well, that's an average over twenty years.
Yeah.
With hurricanes and everything, okay? So if you take the same, the square footers of that house, that's pretty much two inches for twenty days. That's ninety-four thousand two hundred gallons, okay, that I'm supposed to put in the stormwater plan. Every single day, your septic is putting in about five or six hundred gallons every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred gallons a year, okay? The stormwater plan that the town has is tougher than the septic plan. The stormwater plan is fresh water, basically coming off your house, you can drink it. The septic is sewer, okay? So the stormwater plan is about two times harder than what the septic plan is. And then we have to go and pay an engineer to do it. It's just, it's ridiculous. The whole stormwater issue for a while needs to be revamped. And I guess, I think that you all are causing us a lot of trouble for something that we don't have to worry about. And, uh, I would really like to see this stuff changed back. And also change back in the lower areas where you have, where they want us to do an engineered plan and the other, other than X-zone lots. Nathan, you know, you got to have two-foot of separation, water separation. How, how are we going to get two-foot of separation in those lots down the Coast Guard Road where the water table was sixteen inches, eighteen inches in the ground? What are we going to do to get that, to put in a stormwater plan? Fill them? So that's what people don't want. They don't want you to fill them. And the study says don't fill them. I'll stop talking.
Thank you, Billy.
Yeah, I want to make sure everybody knows that we did not recommend to the commissioners.
Yes.
To do this. Just make that very apparent, that we did not say that every lot in Emerald Isle needed to have a engineered stormwater plan. That was not something that the planning board at the time pushed for.
No, and you saw the minutes?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I reviewed those and.
It was only for flood zone lots. It's basically the V E.
Right, and that's what we went back and tried to change again in August, especially, I mean, because Billy, you stood up back then and told us the same scenario, but then the commissioners.
If you just recommended, are you comfortable recommending going back to where it was?
We have some new members that would need to be brought up on the conversation. But I know I, for one, would be fine leaving the X-zone lots that don't have two-foot or greater fill or dirt movement to not have an engineered site plan, to be left at a plot plan from a surveyor. But that's a state general statute when you go to two-foot of fill. That's not something that we can undersea. You know, we can't go any less strict than what the state does, the state requires.
Okay, that's something with the current ordinance now, it's sixteen, it's a sixteen-page ordinance for building on Silver Family well. And I worked with state stormwater style all my career. I worked with, I was building specers, I'm planning, I was club manager. So I've done all that kind of stuff too. And, and to sit here and to think that, um, that, that, like flood zones are, are rising water from sound water and ocean water, uh, that's what usually associated with hurricanes and storms and stuff. And what we're talking about really, I thought we're talking about, like, urban drainage problems. Again, sheet flow coming off of the structures. So I don't know why the X-zone or V-zone matters. And, and like the subdivision out there where there's already a state stormwater system in place. And now we're going to go on top of that with another, another, uh, storm, a local stormwater ordinance. And that's really not necessary because it's taken, uh, I don't think, there's a permit issue going on, like one Chris was talking about. It's, uh, it's been in there for three months and it has no structure except for a retaining wall. And, uh, and it took two levels of engineering to get it up there. And, uh, engineer has already certified that it's not an issue because there's no impervious coverage. He put that with sealed signature on it, but he still, we still can't get a permit on that. There, there's a problem with that.
Well, where did that one go to?
That, that has been permitted.
Oh, yeah, I know. But what I'm saying is like, where did that go to to not get accepted by an engineered sealed stamp? I mean, where did it go to? The Wilmington again? That's what I'm asking, like.
I, I, I have a question.
Yeah, so what I deduce from the situation is there was some contradicting requirements on that. There was one side saying, we don't have impervious, and the other said, well, you still have to permit it because you're over ten thousand square foot of disturbance. So we still, in our ordinance, I would like to see some things lingo changed. You know, we're, we're hung up on a stormwater ordinance right now versus a site plan approval process. So if you're, if you're proposing, you know, you weren't proposing this much, but if you're proposing forty-five thousand square foot of disturbed area, you need a road control permit, the state says so. So, you know, our, where that project specifically fell was under large stormwater, large residential projects for the fact that it disturbed more than ten thousand square foot. And all we had to put on the plan was zero impervious area, um, proposed and that each individual lot meets the ordinance in that it has to have thirty-five percent natural. And it was permitted pretty much immediately once the plan was brought into compliance with the current ordinance.
What I'm saying is where did it go that it got held up, that you had to then get involved to recreate?
The change in planning staff.
The code, well, part of, part of that one in particular, the code is based off of dirt time. Five hundred square feet to ten thousand square feet plus. It doesn't give any exemptions for non-impervious. We just kind of found that workaround. But the code, I mean, I told the other project engineer on that particular project, I, I can agree. I mean, the code's not perfect. It needs some adjustments on it. Because if the intent is to manage the impervious coverage and there's no impervious coverage, that could easily have been an exemption. It just wasn't listed in the code and my job is to enforce what's in the code. As a matter of fact, I agree or disagree with what's in the code, I have to enforce it.
Yes, if you turn to section C of the stormwater management plan standards. So the small residential is less than ten thousand square foot of built, or, sorry, disturbed area. And you scroll down to the large and it doesn't matter, there's no specifics that state that if you put any impervious area down, you have to have that permit. It's all about land disturbance with those requirements. Whereas more truly, it would be a site plan approval versus a stormwater approval. It's just the ordinance doesn't say site plan, it says stormwater. And I think that's, you know, being nineteen pages, I think that was part of the U D O rewrite that we were in the process of doing a year and a half, two years ago. And the consultant that was hired was really, he was trying to help simplify, but it was getting way too convoluted and complicated. So, yes, we agree the ordinance is entirely too long. You have to flip to three or four different sections to be able to understand how to develop one residential lot. And we were in the process of trying to kind of bring all that into one more concise, you know, section.
Tools in the toolbox.
Well, we had too many tools going on.
Remember the tool in the toolbox?
It's too much, yeah.
We don't need all those tools.
No, we didn't need the tools. So we needed, we needed to make a motion to.
Yeah. But I don't know how to, so many different motions.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Roger Fulp, Roger's Home Improvements, R H I Builders. I, I just wanted to speak a little bit. Some of you I have spoken to before, some of you I've not. But I want you to understand the process that has put in place for the stormwater now with the requirement of having a topographical survey done on every lot before you start, then getting a stormwater engineered plan, then getting that engineered plan sent to another engineer to get it engineered again, is creating an effect of taking four to six months to get a building permit. I am sitting on a house right now that I'm two months into. The bank loan is ticking. One year's going to come up. I don't have a permit in sight yet because I don't even have my stuff turned in to be able to send to another engineer yet. I'm still waiting on the first plan. And it's, and it's not, you're overwhelming the surveyors, you're overwhelming all of the professionals in this area with this stuff to where that it is taking six to eight to ten weeks to get anything from them. And then that's just the beginning step. And so we are putting ourselves in a situation where I've got half the amount of time to build a house that I should have. I mean, it should take maybe thirty days or less to get a building permit. It was two to three weeks. Now it's going on six months sometimes. And, and, you know, if you've got a one-year bank loan, you can't build one of these houses in six months and follow all the codes and everything. It, it, it gets to the point, you just can't do it. And then the result of that is, A, you have to re-up your insurance because your builder's risk runs out in a year. And on the island, builder's risk don't cover wind and hail, so you have to buy a wind and hail policy. And then when that runs out in a year, you have to purchase another year of wind and hail because they won't prorate it monthly. So at that point, you're buying all this insurance that you don't really need. And it's, it's getting to the point that, and the homeowners are having to go and they're having to get extensions on their bank loans, which is costing them money. So it's just adding up to a big giant expense that is not necessary. So, thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it. I just wanted to bring that up to you one more time and just let you hear what, what we're dealing with on our side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just to add to what Roger said, and it's not small money. I've got a sound front house that they just pulled their builder Christmas, thirty thousand dollars for one year. So then if you've got to go get another year, we're not talking a couple thousand dollars on the beachfront house. We're talking tens of thousands for one homeowner.
Any other comments from y'all?
Again, I appreciate you letting me speak up again. I appreciate you so much and I'm sorry for interrupting you. But, um, you know, uh, we had some compliance issues at Kama and, and, uh, we were doing some, looking into what was going on, what was the problem and everything. And after all the studies and everything, we came back down to find out that, uh, even, even the hardcore environmentalists were telling us like, we, we don't need more rules. We just need to enforce the ones we got on the book. They're good, they're good rules. I've seen the same thing with the town ordinance. I've talked to several engineers that I've worked my entire career with, it was twenty, thirty-year relationships. And they said that what Emerald Isle had on the books before was working fine. It was a good ordinance and it was, uh, it was doing its job. And, uh, and going back to that, I think would, would be good with a little bit of tweaking on that. Just a, just a little bit of tweaking on that would be, would meet the needs that we can do now, which would take care of this delay problem. It would reduce the cost of, I've, I've heard of contractors having to lay off subcontractors because they didn't have, uh, any other jobs going and the subs had to go find work to feed their families. So it, there's a ripple effect far beyond just applying for a permit that this impacts. And they're, they don't all live in Emerald Isle, but these people are dependent on these jobs and incomes. And so, um, so we can accomplish the same thing. And I, I believe we have a good, good planning record on board now. I believe we can get that enforcement we need and, uh, and he's got support, he's got help in his office now. So I think with just better enforcement of the existing rule that we had before, I think we're going to see a, a big improvement. Because I, I've been on a couple of sites already where the stormwater ordinance. Because I've, I've been on a couple of sites already where the new stormwater ordinance was applied, and there's still issues. So you, it's a barrier island, you're gonna have to deal with hurricanes, sand, mosquitoes, and grain problems. And so, appreciate the work y'all do, and the new members on board, it's not always a bad problem.
Sure, sure, we don't leave you yet.
So is there any reason to even have a stormwater plan on, engineered stormwater plan even on the VE's and AE's like we had recommended before?
The issue is, if you're, I think somebody brought it up a little while ago, in the VE, I don't know if it was Billy or whoever, in your VE, your AE, and, and your limo A zones now, you're expected to see higher groundwater. And then so if, if we do, like what was being approved back in previous ordinance approvals, if we go and put some of these things in the ground that are being put in the water table, they're not capturing the water, so you'd have to fill it anyway. So if we go forcing people to, to show that we have two inches of runoff being forced into the ground, that the ground can't absorb or, you know, handle it, it might
So basically, no.
Cost property damage.
We don't need to have it even on the VE.
But, to what Billy was saying, is your overlay on sheet flow in those areas is more likely to be, you know, the option, especially if you have a 12,000 square foot or larger lot, which is hard to come by, but if you do, you have more space to create blind swells and drainage that, that's more conforming to the natural drainage patterns and hydrology of an area. So, I agree, in, in my personal opinion, in a shaded X or outside of the flood zone, generally those lots are higher, you have further separation to, you know, your seasonal high water table, generally, you know, overlay and flow with appropriate ground cover, you know, as long as you have vegetation, as long as it's not some kind of, you know, herbaceous hard structure.
I'm talking about the AE and VE.
Right, that's the discussion that, you know, would, you know, most good contractors aren't gonna dig a hole and see water and put stormwater in it. But, you know, it happens.
I guess what I'm getting, I'm trying to say is, do we, should we put this back in front of the commissioners, get rid of the stormwater completely, saying we recommend, and maybe doing another option like sheet flow and keeping it like Billy was saying, doing that kind of thing instead of doing engineering ordinance.
Just what existing ordinance was prior to this.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get rid of it, I'd go back to our existing ordinance.
Yeah, but you gotta watch, going back to the existing ordinance, because when you read this study, okay, the, the study, we, we got the study on the town's website now, okay? It was a study that Emerald Isle did in 2013, okay? There was a student from ECU, he did a stormwater study on Emerald Isle, all right? And he tells you in the study, in these places where the water table is high, you want to find a high place on your lot, like where you would put your septic tank and your drain fields, in order to get one foot of separation, you gotta find a higher area on your lot to do that, okay? He's saying in the study that you have to find a high area on the lot also to put your stormwater, and they want you to put it in a retention basin or something like that on a hot area on the lot. If you put it in the ground with the water table, you're competing with the water table. So you're causing the problem, all right? In these other areas in town where we don't have any stormwater issues, and we don't have high water tables, yes, you can put it in the ground, but it's just as simple for everybody to put it right on top of the ground, let it sheet flow. That's what the town's doing with 50 miles of roads. We can't, we do the same thing.
Well, that's
We're making this way too hard.
And that's what I'm getting at, is.
These buildings right here, we're sitting in, standing in. Every bit of them, you look out the back, the gutters are going on to the driveways, the driveways are going into the grass, they're going right into the Ponty Creek, right here behind these buildings. That right there to the east is Archer's Creek, okay? It is a place where shellfish, that's where, it's a nursery area, okay? The town dumping all their shit right into the sand, right into the nursery area, okay? But then they're telling us to go get a stormwater plan engineered. Do as I say, not as I do. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just, I'm tired of dealing with this stuff for a year, it's wasting a lot of our time.
I'm Mike Stanley, I have a lot of building houses, I mean, I own two townhomes, and I live at the bottom of the street, and when it rains, I get water this deep in front of my house. It's on the right of way, it's not in my yard, it's on the right of way. And we talk, discuss the, you know, the town, we're gonna get this straightened out. But, you know, I stand at, I stand at the bottom of the street, and I look up toward Polly Street, up toward the west, and I notice that everybody's yard has got grass that's grown up this far on the edges of the road. And what's happening is, it, it just drives the water down the street down to my house. But if, if we could find a way, we have 50 miles of roads, and it would take us a mile a day, it would take 100 days to, to peel off the edges of the roads, and I think a lot of this problem, as, as Billy was saying, sheets, it would sheet off the roads, and it would be the amount of issues that we have today. Personally, I will be keeping my, not so much, not a, not a bad fall of it, but just enough where the water can roll off. If the water rolls off, it will just dissipate. We live on a sand dune. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Any motions?
So currently, in, in the UDO, is stormwater for everything, correct?
Just about, yes, ma'am.
We had recommended and were denied to only do the AE and VE stormwater, and anything X, shaded X, didn't require one, and the commissioners denied that one, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm aware of and provided you guys with minutes from that meeting where you recommended it, and it just did not, it was not adopted by the board as recommended.
So we do have new board members, so should we go back with our previous recommendation or go back with?
Y'all liked our recommendation last time, didn't you?
What was it? Say it again.
Y'all were somewhat in favor of our last recommendation.
Yeah, we made a recommendation last time, before we read the study and checked into a lot of these things, that we would send this back to the board, and that in a, in an X zone lot, we would not have to have an engineered stormwater plan at all. We would go back to doing the same thing we were doing, okay? So that's what we would like to recommend tonight. But when you read the study, and I hope the commissioners read the study, and I hope y'all read the study, it says in these lower lots, that the only thing that we can do is to put the water on the higher part of the lot, so it doesn't compete with the, with the groundwater, all right? And in those areas, when we have a storm, if you look at the website, Matt already has on there, they're gonna start pumping the water from the Coast Guard Road corridor, all that whole area through there, all the way to Landen, they're gonna start pumping all of that water with those six wells that they have, they're gonna pump them to the Oceanfront and Landen, okay? So they've taken care of that whole area in there with stormwater, all right? Re Drive still has a problem, so maybe next they'll fix that and put in some wells down there and pump that. There's really nothing that you can do to get an engineered plan in those areas, you can get an engineered plan, but they're gonna tell you, if you get an engineered plan at the, if the elevation of the water table was 16 inches below the ground, which if you go down in those seed dunes and you look in the ditches, the water's in the ditches. Tie, right?
Yep.
All the time, the water's in the ditches. So the first thing that the engineer's gonna tell you to do is you're gonna have to fill the lot. So, what are we doing? Read the study, take your recommendations of the doctors, okay, that wrote the study. They say best management practices, right Chad?
Yeah.
Keep everything right on top of the ground. We're on a barrier island, that's what they say. So what I would recommend tonight is send it back to the town board, no engineers at all, okay? And we'll keep doing the same thing we've been doing. Educate everybody on the stormwater study from these doctors from Greenville. Educate them, educate the people with the town, have some few things over here, the Recreation Department, where you can tell people to keep your water on your own lots, that's what it says in the study. Educate the public to keep the water on your own lots. The town has a lot of problems, because just what Mike Stanley said, the grass has grown over the roads. So the roads aren't sheet flowing anymore. The roads are running down the road, it's going down the road, and it's going in people's yards, going in people's houses.
Only issue, like, with that, and I, I get it, I'm with you about going back to what it used to be, however, educating them on what the study is, isn't putting anything in play for Chris's job or the town's job to enforce, you know what I mean? There's no force.
Chris needs to rewrite this, write the ordinance
Correct.
To the study.
To then, to bring it up.
I mean, that makes sense to me, and just rewrite the ordinance
Yep.
And use what's in the study.
Exactly.
I mean, the study is 84 pages long.
Yeah.
In, in that study, did they discuss concentrated flow versus no gutters on roofs?
Yes, they said
Do not put
It's a hindrance to put gutters on roofs.
Yep.
And for the last 20 years, the town, the town's had stormwater problems up here for 40 years. I've been coming up here to these board meetings for 40 years, listening to engineers in here telling us about all the stormwater problems we have, and the town has not fixed them for 40 years, okay? So 20 years ago, somebody got the inspections department, they said, well, we're, we're gonna start putting gutters on, we're gonna start putting rock beds in, we're gonna start putting this stuff underground, okay? That's what we've done for the last 20 years. But when you read this study
30 years.
It says, don't do that. You don't really wanna have people put gutters on them. You wanna have rock beds underneath your eaves, and you wanna have slopes on your driveways, you wanna sheet flow everything out into your yard. Two inches of water.
In that study, did it touch on side slopes away from the home? So typically, a vegetated filter strip is prohibited to be, it's required to be less than 7% side slopes
Yeah.
To be able to get that infiltration that you're speaking of
Yeah.
With sheet flow. Did it touch on that as well?
It explained that there's about six or seven different best management practices that you can use.
So where I'm getting with that
Highs swells.
Where I'm getting with that is, you know, the common builder's not gonna read that, they're just gonna go build. So if we give them, give an option to say, okay, you can do the old way if you wanna put gutters and collect it, but you can't sheet flow from a conveyance, a concentrated downslope, that's, you're gonna create headcut velocity, and it's gonna go straight to the neighbor's yard. Also, you can't sheet flow across the three to one side slope on the side of a driveway.
Yeah.
It doesn't work that way. So that's where, you know, I think that's where my mind goes, where it's saying, hey, it's probably more beneficial to get a topographic survey and engineer to make sure that, you know, if, if your finished floor of a slab house, you know, if they wanna be two foot above base flood, or if they wanna be a certain elevation above the road, to make sure that your neighbor, your tie point, is all, you know, kosher, it's not, you know, three to one side slope, and you're trying to sheet flow from your driveway down to your neighbor at three to one, well, that's not gonna infiltrate, it's gonna go straight to your neighbor. That's where, I agree that down, that putting in the ground is not feasible on every lot, it's not practical, it's just not right. Anywhere you can have a, a swell or something, you know, above grade is definitely better, but it has to have certain stipulations that, you know, if we just put in the ordinance, you have to have less than 7 or 10% slope, you have to have this, you have to have that. Who's, are we gonna do an as-built at the end, or required that, you know, it's been built properly, or?
Let me tell you what we've been doing for the last 10, 15 years, we've been doing these systems, okay? The planner, we would call, when we get our grain permit, we would call the planner. The planner will come out and meet with us on how much we're gonna take away on our 35% natural, okay? At that time, we're going to give him a piece of paper, telling him how we're gonna deal with our stormwater, all right? He can show them all these best management practices. If people don't know what they're doing, I mean, he can show them this, and they can come up with a plan, and then, and put these into practice, and at the end of the job, the planner goes to the job, when we have all this put into place, before we landscape or after we landscape, and then he approves it. I mean, it's real simple. We don't need an engineer to do that. We build houses. I mean, we all have licenses. We know how to get rid of two inches of water. I mean, that, it's a pretty simple thing to do. I mean, the, the town, county does it with the septic, I mean, four bedroom, six bedroom, 20 bedroom, 10 bedroom, whatever you wanna do. I mean, we do that, we know how to do that. We don't need an engineer to do that. We don't need, engineers wanna engineer something. That's not engineering, when you're putting it on top of the ground. I mean, Haxton's brother told me, he said, Billy, give me something I can engineer. You know, I mean, this is simple stuff. Builders can engineer this, I think. I mean, we've been doing it for a long time. And go back and show us where you're having trouble with the ones that we've put in for the last 15 years. I mean, you're not having trouble with those. Out of 100, you might have trouble with one or two, but I would say that's more on the person who maybe is owning the house, not keeping everything cleaned out, or, you know, keeping it up the way it needs to be.
Or the person that bought your house that doesn't have the gutters on it, and then calls the gutter guy, and he comes, throws gutters on there, and is dumping it down the driveway now.
Yeah, I mean
So how do you, how do you control that?
An engineer can't control that, and I can't control that. I mean, that's just something that, education to the public, right over there at Recreation Department, we have it twice a year, show people how to do these things. With all the pre-existing houses that are built, we could go in and show them how to do these things here, down in Sea Oats and places like that, not Sea Oats, but Sea Dunes and all the areas down the Coast Guard Road, all it takes is a little bit of education. Doug said he, with the KAMA, they started educating the people with KAMA, and they got 25% of the calls they were getting, you know? They were getting people calling in all the time, people building docks, started education little deal, everybody finds out about it, that's all you need to do. We don't need engineers. We don't need to wait three or four months or six months to get for them for a minute.
And I'm currently working with a Georgia State Agricultural Extension agent, doing a nature-based stormwater strategy, and we're, working with Mark Cruz also, and we're gonna start putting that, doing a video series of how to use native vegetation to mitigate stormwater on your own property. And that's something that, that, that study did mention also, was doing bio-retention basins, and doing, using native-based vegetation to soak up the stormwater. And so, I think we're on the right track already, and if we can supplement that with, with some good, with enforcement, and with just a good practical ordinance that doesn't have to go overboard, I, I think we can accomplish a lot. Not saying we're gonna fix it, I don't know if there is an actual fix for the, for the whole thing, but, of course hindsight's always the best, looking back, but I, I think we can definitely make improvements. And, and maybe even give people an option, like, okay, if you wanna use a, a nature-based stormwater strategy, or you can use engineered system, or you can use this prescribed grading plan where you reflet two inches, and, and you just keep, you know, the, the one sentence in the ordinance, you keep stormwater on your property to the maximum extent practical. And, kind of, do with that. And then, this is one of those very unique cases, the, the planning director can require an engineer plan at his discretion, and then the engineer who designed it can come out and inspect, to make sure it's done according to his specification. We don't need to sub it up to some guy in Wilmington. So that's, I, I think we can keep everything right local and, and expedite the process.
Anybody have, any idea how to make a motion? I don't. I don't make motions anyway.
Trying to get to them earlier.
Yeah, trying to make sure that it's covered, because I agree, I don't, you just have to word it properly so that, you know, the, like, what we were saying, you have to keep the first two inches of runoff from impervious surfaces on your property, end of story. However you want to choose to do so, well, that's your purview as, as a builder, as a homeowner, as a citizen.
Mr. Chairman, could you do something like you did for the, the previous ordinance, like, pull it back? Mr. Kenny, could you do something like you did for the, uh, the previous ordinance, like, uh, just pull it back and say, okay, we're gonna pull this back and leave a, leave something in place until we can do a study, you know, go back and figure out how to actually tweak the.
Word it, yeah.
Yeah.
The original ordinance, that, that was a good ordinance.
No, we didn't have it tonight unless we go back to the original.
What was that, sorry?
Yeah, we had to go back to the original and then.
Where it just said you had to keep the first two inches on your property. And it gave recommendations.
Issues is the time it takes. I mean, if, if it took an extra two or three days, that's not that big a deal. But it costs a lot of money and it takes months. That ain't right. Town supports that on you, that's wrong. Um, it's how to change it. Without eliminating the stormwater rules, we have stormwater problems. We gotta find solutions.
Kenny, I don't think they're asking to eliminate, I think they're asking to eliminate bottleneck in the process.
Yeah.
And asking to keep the first two inches on the property.
Can we just, can we just go back? Cause like we haven't.
Yeah, we're getting caught up pretty quick.
Can we go back to the old way?
Yeah, cause you know, in those AE zones.
So we should make a recommendation to go back to the old way that we did it. And then put it out there to, that we want to.
We can evaluate it, but it, you know, it.
Unless we do something crazy that needs to be fixed, I'd say, like, let's just move it back and leave it for now.
Do you have a copy of what the ordinance stated part two?
I'm sorry?
Did, uh, did the large residential, that always required engineered site plans, correct? That always required.
Anything over ten thousand.
Yeah, but the first time we're gonna come into that, the lots on this beach are twelve thousand five hundred feet.
Absolutely.
If you're gonna go thirty-five percent naturally, the only way you can go to ten thousand feet is have two lots. So, so we don't even, that's just, we're majoring in all that stuff, we don't even talk about that stuff. Because most of the lots on MRI are seven thousand feet, twelve thousand five hundred feet. So we're under that threshold already.
Yeah.
I, I think if you take it back.
What you're doing.
If you make a motion, that when you will send it back to the town board, okay? And have it like it was prior to the changes last year in two thousand twenty-three. And then let the commissioners at the next meeting maybe pull a committee with Chris to go put some of these things in here from the, um, study. So that we can start using these things in the study that the doctor told us to use two thousand thirteen. That would be a good idea for that.
Yeah, we don't mind making Chris work harder. We don't mind making Chris work harder.
He's got more hours in the day.
Get him music.
Yeah, not gonna chase down stormwater.
Us builders would love to be in a group and maybe, you know, once every six months, have a, a, a group meeting with the town. So that we can go over things like this. So stuff like this doesn't happen to us again. Because this has cost tremendous amount of money and a waste of time for thirty or forty, fifty builders in MRI. And it, and it shouldn't happen, you know what I mean? This shouldn't have never happened. If we would've just went by this study, we wouldn't be having these problems. Because it tells you right in the study what to do to fix them. And that's right there, showing all the pictures of all the best management practices for stormwater on MRI.
Where did you get that study from?
I read the study online one night. We were, they were, the town was voting for, um, the stormwater change. And I just was going on MRI, on, on the Google, and I Googled MRI problems with, uh, stormwater.
Is that the one you?
This study, this thesis popped up from ECU.
Is that the one you emailed me?
And that's the one I emailed you. But the town, they helped pay for the study in two thousand thirteen. Frank Rushin thanked, the, the, the guy who wrote the thesis thanked the town of MRI for paying for part of the study.
I read the per few pages of it, I, I got so lost in it, I said, this isn't gonna help me much.
Eighty-nine pages, a lot of graphs, a lot of things that I don't understand. They, they even probably understand all of it, I don't understand.
The, the last, last couple of pages is the best part to read.
Just give a conclusion at the end, they tell you what to do to fix it, okay? I could read that, that's very simple, how the picture tells you everything.
So I would like to make a motion for small residential projects to the commissioners to try to revamp what's required, uh, to bring some of that, that, that material to life, to be able to put it into our ordinance. Where they're talking about vegetated filter strips and whatnot. I'd like to make a motion to bring some of that data into the ordinance to, uh, to allow the small residential projects to not be required to have engineered site plans and stormwater designs.
What's, what's the small defined as?
Less than ten thousand square foot. Which, like Billy said, there's really not many. There are a few, but there's not many.
Above ten thousand.
Above, yeah. The small is below ten thousand. Is five hundred to ten thousand?
Five hundred. And that's per lot, correct?
Per, well, per project. So like Ashley had, you guys had three lots, there were one project that was greater than ten thousand square feet. So that would adhere to the large plan. So like you get tricked in, you get tripled into, uh, erosion control features. You know, your sediment traps and things like that, where you have conveyance methods and whatnot. But most every lot, we could do a quick study on GIS over the coming weeks to see how many lots it would affect individual, single lots.
That's a great idea, but it holds us in limbo while all that study is done. Going back to the old plan and then while we can go ahead and work and get our jobs done and keep things moving to our subs, our homeowners, going back to the old plan while
Yeah.
The commissioners and do these.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, that's what we're saying. We're recommending to the commissioners to pull the engineered requirement for the small projects. That, that's not the lot being over ten thousand, it's the disturbed area over ten thousand. So really, that's pulling that requirement out. And then them just looking at the ordinance and say, hey, you know, this picture looks great. Let's put this in the stormwater ordinance as a, as a recommended feature to help, you know, infiltrate stormwater versus having gutters and having, you know, the, the popcorn bundles in the ground that fill up with sand within two years.
So what would we be doing?
Keep. So the recommend, the, my motion would be to, to flat out put in the ordinance, keep two inches of stormwater runoff from your property, on your property. So it's really a long.
They're gonna vote on it in two weeks, so it's gonna be all up to the commissioners. Cause they're gonna have to vote to go back to what they're recommending.
It, I know it's a long motion, but. Perfect.
Second. Andrea, second one. Any other questions? Your hammer's up, did you have anything else?
Me?
Yeah.
I was just gonna.
Any other discussion?
So is this motion to go back to the original stormwater?
No, cause nobody, nobody hears what the motion was. It's just to pull the engineered requirement out for the small projects. But require you to, require the developer or the builder to retain two inches of stormwater runoff on the property.
Okay, so we're not going back to the old version.
I don't know what the one said, so I don't know.
The code online has the history of the old code.
Yeah.
We, we can get access to the previous code.
Make, should we go back to the previous code and add that about the two? Or should we just go back to the previous code and ask the commissioners to review that study and?
They changed the code about the middle of two thousand twenty-three. If you go back to the code at, beginning in January of two thousand twenty-three, that would be the original code of what we've had for the last ten, fifteen years. With the two inches of water.
Right.
Keeping on your own site.
Yeah.
Doing a sheet flow.
Greg.
Yeah, and like Billy said, if we go back to that code, we can go with business as usual, waiting for more suggestions and having discussions with the town as builders. We're all on the same page. We all know what to do while we're working through this. Instead of leaving a vague, open-ended suggestion that we still, we don't know how. We're gonna be calling up Chris, all of us, every permit, every job, getting information. It's gonna bother him still. If we go back to the old code, we all know what it is, and then we can look at it.
Yeah, we have a neighbor, we were just talking to the other day, and they're saying it's been a year, they've just been trying to get permits for a year. And they, they're just taking their house down to, I mean, it's, it's crazy to me and it's, it causes ripple effects everywhere. It's just not okay.
I think that's basically what.
Well, it's not, I mean, it's not what they, what they can say.
If you don't go back to the original and you just try to change some wording on it, it's not going back.
Well, we need the original, we had, need a date, um, prior to X date, um, I don't know when.
Yeah, I can't pull it up.
When was this, or one past, do you have that date, information with you? I think it's written in this packet somewhere.
I think it was in August.
Do you have it on your plan at the word retention when you changed it? I think it was like, uh, it was right after.
Was that?
We didn't change it.
It might've been, uh, February or March.
I don't have it. I don't know that I have that with me. I've got it somewhere, I'm sure.
I'm trying to find.
The first, the first permit I ran into it was in May of two thousand twenty-two. And that was from Michelle, was the town planner. She said that it had changed in January of two thousand twenty-two.
That was twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Okay, it was twenty-two. Well, go back to the first, two thousand twenty-two and go back to that code.
So I'm, so I make a motion to go back to the stormwater, um, policy that was in effect before January of two thousand twenty-two and ask that the commissioners review, um, and ask that the commissioners review the, um, the ECU study and see about working in some other ways to manage stormwater. Does that work?
Hold on, you do have one motion on the table.
Oh, I gotcha.
You gotta close that out before.
Do we have a second on Aethon's first motion?
We already had a second.
Yes, I seconded it.
Yes.
So we need a vote?
No. Okay, so we need to vote on that. We can always change it.
Yeah.
All those in paper with Aethon's motion say aye? It passed, okay. So we have a second motion.
Oh, I gotta say that again.
You gotta say it again. Verbatim, verbatim, don't miss a word, verbatim.
The minutes included with this packet are from August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. It's when we made the last recommendation.
But that was, that was not the. Yeah, that was where we were adding the, not doing, where we recommended not to do this X area.
We're talking about going back to the original.
Yeah, we're gonna go all the way back.
Think you know the date, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so I make a motion to go back to previous stormwater requirements from the UDO previous or prior to January two thousand twenty-two. Um, and ask that the commissioners at that point then can look at studying stormwater issues, um, referring to that ECU study and also, uh, discussing with the builders.
I second.
Okay, everybody understand the motion this time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
It passes this time.
Yeah, on the commission.
That was so.
Second time.
You didn't even.
You did a good job, you did a good job.
It's not what they wanted. Nobody's here to oppose it, everybody's here to.
Thank you, everybody.
Wrap, go back, so.
Wrap it up there.
Appreciate what you guys do. Best job, Mr. Dory Will, thank you.
For a good finger.
Okay, we lost our audience.
How did you like your first day at the job?
Bust it out, bust it out, let's move on, bust it out.
Been through plenty of these.
Okay, it's past cocktail hour, so let's make.
I got no comments, Johnny comments was too much.
Report from city director.
Chris, real quick, uh, again, my name's Chris Seberg. I, you know, I've had twenty-plus years of municipal and county experience. You know, I've been planning director, I've been town manager, I've been town administrator, you know, I, I've played around a little bit. Uh, I would like to introduce Greg Hayes. He is the assistant planner. He has helped me navigate this transition and, and get things to where we're receiving concerns on past experiences of months and we have closed that gap dramatically. So we, we have worked hard to get to that point. So I just wanna introduce Greg also, I didn't know if you wanted to make any comments.
Um, so Chris is the fourth planning director that I've had the pleasure of supporting, uh, which is probably why I was made an assistant town planner. Um, I started working part-time with the town in February of two thousand twenty-two, uh, sitting at the front desk, answering phones, stuff like that. And slowly got to here and get, uh, involved with the, the planning process, entering permits into the system, learning what questions to ask and things like that. So, um, I know a couple of you guys up here, Chad, Ethan, um, I've worked with, it's processing permits. I hope I give good service.
Yes, sir, absolutely, great job, great job.
So.
Always glad to see your number pop up. Cause I know that you're asking for credit cards.
Exactly, exactly. Um, and just, just to give you a little context, you know, they're, they're talking about, you know, the rank of time it takes to get a permit. A lot of that is, it's outside the town.
Yeah, we, uh.
Yeah.
Understandable, but, but.
Yeah, I know, exactly. As, as, as we like to say, if we get a complete permit application, we can usually turn it around and settle it in business state.
Yeah, uh, we know it's not in the town, it's not the town, it's the outside. I mean, for my house, for instance, it took, what, six weeks with the engineer in Wilmington?
Yeah.
And that's, that's unacceptable to me. But.
So we're, uh, we're trying, we're doing our best.
Yeah. I don't think anybody has any problem with what the town itself employees.
Intentions.
Don't you go anywhere.
Yeah.
You stay.
Same with you.
When I went in to meet, uh, our new planning director, I got orders from Matt Zap. He told me, don't run this one off, Kenny. Didn't he?
Well, they thought it was me, it was something with me.
Well, you're on your fourth.
Yeah, exactly.
I got, you got a long way to go to catch up with me. I think I've run off six or eight. Okay, well, gonna move this along.
Ease your concerns, I'm not planning on going anywhere. Uh, three more things, uh, we do need you guys to vote on your two thousand twenty-four schedule. I know we are in February of two thousand twenty-four. Um, essentially what was presented to the board in December is following the same, uh, as previous years, the fourth Monday of each month at six PM here at the meeting room. Uh, two months are a little bit different. Uh, May is shifted to the twentieth because of Memorial Day. And, uh, December is shifted to the sixteenth because of Christmas. Is everybody comfortable with that schedule?
Yeah, I can't make the May one then, it's my anniversary, I'll be gone. I'm gonna ask for a.
Anniversary is not excusable.
You tell my wife that. You tell my wife.
We don't want mad wives up here.
No, no.
Mad builders are nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mad wives is bad.
Yes.
So we gotta vote on, you gotta vote on that?
Yes, you do have to vote on that if, if, if you guys are comfortable with that, uh, schedule type.
I want to make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to proceed with the schedule as Chris explained.
I want to make a second. Okay, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
It passes.
All right.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, just two dates, next board commissioners meeting is March the twelfth. And your next meeting, um, if we have something, it will be March twenty-fifth. And then whatever comments you guys have tonight.
Okay, anybody got any comments? Ethan?
No comments.
Aye?
No comments.
Ed?
Welcome, Chris.
Yes, welcome.
Greg, keep up the good work. I haven't met all the new people. Congratulations.
We're first meeting. Coming at the beginning.
Yeah.
This is what it looks like every other time.
Down here, the new face. A little confusion on, on this. He's recently appointed, um, to fill the vacant seat on the planning board. There's some confusion at the board commissioners meeting. The mayor broke the tie and the, and the town attorney said that he can't do that. So I was told he wasn't.
I thought that was his.
Not for appointments.
Appointments, no.
So that's why I stayed fairly quiet this evening.
Yeah, I, he, he agreed not to. It's a good, good way for to learn how boring this thing is.
The one that had an answer for you then.
Do what?
Their next meeting.
Oh, at the 12th.
12th.
Yeah. There, one of the commissioners was absent, which was his third vote,